I thought we'd roll. Go ahead and, all right, I will call to order the special meeting of the governing board public hearing. Let the record show that three board members are present, Mrs. Ordway, Mrs. Tweedy, and Ms. Frank, myself. The time is 6:46. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Oh, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. No opposition? All right, so we have part A and part B. Part A, public hearing on the truth in taxation statement for fiscal year 2018-19. Mr. Miglerino.
President Frank, members of the board, Dr. Finch. So we have the same presentation to share with you that we did back at the end of June when we talked about the proposed budget. There have been no changes. I'm happy to go through the presentation for the benefit of the, for the audience ending it coming up, but I, I'll be brief, going through the slides, maybe? Oh.
It's Jim font, you can't read it.
So maybe I won't. The, but again, there have been no changes to, to the actual budget as it was presented at the end of June, and so it's the exact same presentation. And essentially, it is everything that we have talked about leading up to this point over the past five to six months of developing the budget. It does include the increases because, again, our salaries and benefits are about eighty-seven, eighty-eight percent of our budget. That amount is included and new to this, for this year. On the cover page is the stated increase, average increase for our teachers. It's calculated at twelve percent, going from forty-four thousand, four hundred and three dollars to forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and four dollars. So absent, having the, the actual presentation, I'll be happy to answer any questions, but we do have to open this up as a public hearing and allow any comments or testimony from the public.
Okay, so I'll start with any questions from board members. All right, do we have any comments, input from members of the public? Speak now or forever hold your peace. Okay, I'll take that as a no. So that will move us along to item B, public hearing on the proposed 2018-19 expenditure budget.
And President Frank, I just did, I kind of was doing both of those at the same time. Actually, here is the presentation, and the truth in taxation is actually at the end of this just because it speaks about the tax rate. So I'll just, I'll quickly run through these slides, but here's the process that we followed. Again, it's about a five or six month duration, lots of input. New this year was the district budget committee that we've talked about, and the N S T helped develop both the benefit recommendation and salary recommendation, which is the lion's share of our budget. These are just financial priorities. Just some highlights here, the override is at fifteen percent, which is what the voters approved. We do have one point eight percent of inflationary funding, which was granted to us with proposition one, two, three. And we want to caution that current year funding provision is still included in this budget, meaning that we're having to guess at how many students we have next year, and that's how we get funded. So it is based on estimates. And then the carry forward is established at the most recent or may report at just over a million dollars in projected carry forward. We do have the staffing established at what we talked about before as a plus one, so these are not our caseloads that are in, in our certified manual, but we staff it with one more so that we can minimize the surplusing of staffing because these are projections of the number of students. And then we make adjustments throughout the beginning of the school year to make sure that we do actually staff them at the ratios that are in the certified manual. We did reduce the amount of dependence on cash accounts by about a half a million dollars. We're not counting on an additional contribution from community education in eighteen nineteen. Does include four hundred thousand dollars worth of adjacent ways, and I will get to that when we get to the truth in taxation. But bottom line is, the budget increases from just under two hundred million to just over two hundred and thirteen point seven million for nineteen, with a lion's share of that being salary increases. So this shows that our budget is balanced at two hundred and fourteen million dollars. The reason for the difference in the amounts, remember, we have a working budget, which is our gold book, which is what we're showing here, and then we actually have the state forms that generate the general budget limit. So there are two different numbers. The working budget is what we include additional funds that we're going to contribute into our M and O fund. The general budget limit and state forms actually are driven by formula and statute as to how those amounts are generated.
I do have a quick question, if I may. On the parking fees and athletic participation fee, is that number based on our, our current fee schedule?
President Frank, yes, it's based on the current fee schedule, and it also is based on what we have been realizing in the revenue that's generated from the approved fee schedule.
Okay, so it does not reflect any potential increases to fees?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
We mentioned the staffing increases, and I don't want to glaze over this just because I think it has been historic, certified. Increases were twelve percent, ten percent in the twenty by twenty twenty revenue that was generated from the governor's plan, and two percent of an increase in the classroom site fund. All the other professional staff, our counselors, speech, that was at ten percent, average classified increase at seven percent, and average admin exempt increase at four percent. So kind of a historic salary increase for our district. We haven't realized something like this in about thirty years, so I think it's, it's notable. You can see the other changes here. The bottom four are the items that were recommended by N S T, whether the last are late adds, if you will, to, to the budget. We were able to afford all of those and balance the budget, including the additional, or restoring the full-time district athletic director, the school-based administrative support, adding to that, creating a hard-to-fill designation for nursing positions, and then increasing substitute teacher pay by five dollars a day. On the non-staffing front, we were able to utilize some of our reserves within the Valley Schools Employee Benefit Group to offset the rate increases. So there was no rate increase, not only for our employees, but for our employees that elected for dependent care. I say that because I don't know that we've ever done that. It does worry me to some extent because we have done nothing to change the claims experience that we expect to realize, and, and when we artificially set the rate lower than it's realized, if there is a inflationary increase in that amount, it will grow exponentially in future years if we weren't able to cover it with the reserves like we did this year. Slight increase on state retirement. Utilities, thankfully, because of the federal tax reform, even though there were APS rate increases, we think we can cover that due to, so there are no increases in our utility budget through our utility efforts, as well as the federal tax reform, you know, discount that APS is offering to us. And then a slight, or just a minimalistic capital budget for us. Our budget, capital budget used to be in excess of sixteen million dollars, just below five million dollars, what we're planning for next year. We get capital funds from district additional assistance, and I think even with it being partially restored for next year, or I should say this year now, right, it's still sixty-five percent of the allocation is being cut, a state imposed reduction, so over ten million dollars of the fifteen point six that we qualify for. This is all information about the tax rate, and again, trying to be brief, there, the net impact on the average assessed valuation residential parcel in the district is going to be about seven point two percent. And that's largely due to the secondary tax rate increasing, the primary rate we're projecting a slight decrease on, and the secondary tax rate pays for things like the M and O override, all the voter-approved initiatives. And we do have a little bit of a bubble in our bond repayment schedule in nineteen due to having a, a large planned expenditure in fiscal year nineteen from a two thousand eight bond authorization. So just kind of a, a little bubble. Next year, for example, it's thirty-eight million dollars in fiscal year nineteen, next year it's going to go down to thirty-six million dollars. So just a slight little increase there that we're trying to mitigate as much as possible. So the long and short of it, this is all just information about the tax rate. Here's the seven point two percent. So the average assessed valuation residential property goes from a hundred and ninety-eight million dollars to two hundred and two million dollars, or two hundred and two thousand dollars, sorry, million, that would be, that'd be a very nice house. So just under two hundred thousand to just over two hundred thousand of, just about five percent increase. With the tax rate that we're projecting, that would be a seven point two percent increase. Again, those are all averages. These are actual properties within the district, and these actually evidence about a seven point four percent increase on these various properties that we looked at, just to provide some context. Again, these are all projections based on the tax rate. They are actually established by the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors on the third Monday in August, so that's when we'll know actually what the tax rate will, will be. I mentioned this before, and this was part of the public hearing as well, we are projecting four hundred thousand dollars worth of adjacent ways. These are for safety-related projects, you know, for our district. By statute, these monies can only be used for safe ingress and egress to our properties or for utility connections. We are projecting that the, this four hundred thousand dollars would be used for the next modernization project, making improvements typically to the fire lane and, and access for emergency vehicles at the next school that we modernize, and/or for a traffic signal that we're working with the City of Phoenix on, out on Fifty First Avenue to allow for a safe exit from our, our bus transportation facility. That four hundred thousand dollars costs, on a hundred thousand dollar home, a dollar fifty-five for the year, and we had four hundred, coincidentally, we had four hundred thousand dollars in last year's budget, and that was a dollar sixty-three, almost a dollar sixty-four for that same hundred thousand dollar home. Unfortunately, all the language that you see in the truth and taxation notice, which had to be published and is shown here, is, conforms to what's in statute. So it's a certain font, it's a certain font size, and all this language, other than the actual dollar amounts, is prescribed to us. So I'm going to use the term that it's a minimalistic amount of the tax increase to have this on there, but it's for, again, what we feel are essential projects to ensure the safety of, of our organization, not only for, again, the bus drivers and the public that travels down Fifty First Avenue, but also to make sure that we can provide for the means for safety vehicles to get onto our campuses that we're making improvements on. And I think that's all the information.
So I have a question that I believe, Mrs. Fisher, then, on the, the tax increase for the, the safety, for the adjacent ways and modernization and the potential traffic signal, are there other funds that could be utilized for those projects?
President Frank, yes, we could utilize other funds, like we have some bond proceeds that could be used for those, but, for example, the traffic signal is not included in what the, was in the voter-authorized packet, because we've been told by the city that it would be difficult to put a light in, and we're actually being told that again, by the way, but we're still working with them to try and see if there's a way that we can continue those conversations to the point where we might be able to put it in. But it's not in the voter-approved pamphlet. That doesn't mean we can't use bond money for it, because any legal expense up to ten percent of the total can be spent on any other need in the district. So of the hundred and fifty-eight million dollars, we could spend fifteen million dollars, fifteen point eight million dollars. It won't cost that much for the traffic signal. But, so yes, we could use bond proceeds for it, but that would mean that something that was in the pamphlet would have to be reduced by whatever that amount would be.
Okay. I guess I don't understand how, I mean, I understand how traffic signals work, but in terms of who pays for them? I was about to say something that would make me sound really stupid. So, I mean, if we request a traffic, traffic signal, that, is that covered by the city? Or we, we would have to pay for that, or? Stop laughing at me, Ms. Tweedy.
President Frank, the, the city would require us to purchase it.
Okay. Good to know. Mrs.
Correct.
Right, okay. Mrs. Fisher, you had some questions?
I did. Because we do have funds, other funds, I just, and I know last year I was willing to go ahead and approve having the adjacent ways in this additional tax, considering it was a small amount, wanting to make sure that our homeowners are kind of getting that stability. And I understand this would be slightly less, but it would still be a tax. What concerns me is if we have other funds, why would we tax our community? They are taxed by the fire department, they're taxed by the police, they're taxed by every other initiative and, and continuous, there's, there's a continuous desire to tax our residents. If we don't actually need to, to apply this tax, why would we do it? And I understand that there may be a time in the future that we need to, and that would be a greater bump, they would see a bump versus, you know, they would see a dollar fifty bump versus a ten cent reduction, like they would in this case, but it sounds to me like you don't really know exactly what we're going to use it for. I mean, we might use it for a light, but we may not ever get the authorization to use it for a light. And we might use it for an egress, you know, on one of our campus renovations, but we also have that in our bond. So is there something I'm missing in what, in, why would we want to add any tax to one of our taxpayers, to, to one of our homeowners, if it's unnecessary? A dollar, a dollar fifty-five is still greater than zero, in my mind. And when they're being taxed by all these other areas, if we don't have to do that, I, I, I just need a real reason why we would.
Yeah, President Frank, Ms. Fisher, I, I think one reason that, again, the traffic signal, even though we've had conversations with the city in the past, it's not part of the, what's in the authorization, so something else has to give. And if you'll remember, even at Arrowhead, just due to the rising cost of construction, we had to make adjustments to the modernization project because we, the, the amount of money that we set aside for those projects isn't enough. But I think one of the real reasons to consider adjacent ways, because it is in the statute, is that it allows for us to have a direct tax that doesn't incur any interest charges. So if it were, if, if it were to be funded from a bond, then you would have the interest costs of paying that off over time, as opposed to a direct tax that wouldn't have the escalation, I'll call it, of the interest charges of being able to pay it off over time.
No, and I understand that, that to defuse your bonds and you're going to have to pay those charges, but it doesn't sound like we're going to change our bond authorization. We're not going to, we're not going to seek bond for less because we have this additional four hundred thousand, or, it's so that savings won't translate. We're still going to seek the complete bond that was voted for, correct?
President Frank, Ms. Fisher, yes, we still have plans to sell the entire authorization that was given to us in two thousand thirteen.
So we would still have that complete cost?
For the, the items that were in the, for the items that were in the, in the pamphlet, yes.
Okay, so then it still is, to me, if we were going to bond, sell less bonds, and this, this would, this would definitely make sense, we're going to have a interest-free amount of money versus that, that, I think that's where my concern comes in. I'll, I'll let Ms. Ordway go ahead and, and then see if I can think my way through it, maybe we can, maybe I'll come up with another question, because as it sits now, I don't see a purpose for adding a tax to our, to our homeowners.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Mrs. Ordway, thank you for waiting.
You're welcome. Mr. Miglerino, if we do pass the, the adjacent ways funding, what happens to that funding if we don't use it at all? Or, or all of it? Just, where does it go?
President Frank, Ms. Ordway, it actually remains in the adjacent ways fund until we decide that we don't want to carry it any further, and then would be used to offset taxes if we wanted to allow it to be returned to the taxpayers.
So there would be no, no statutory requirement that if we passed it and we didn't use it, that we would have to use it? We could actually return it?
President Frank, Ms. Ordway, yes.
I'm not saying that is going to really happen, but it could if we didn't end up needing those funds, and that would still be an interest-free way to have that money available as opposed to the bond money.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Ordway. Mrs. Fisher, did you have further questions? I think Ms. Tweedy also has some questions as well.
I'd like you to explain how we're going to return it, once we've collected it. Because I don't know about anyone else. I don't generally get a little check back for.
Yeah, President Frank.
For a dollar fifty.
Yeah, President Frank, Ms. Fisher, what it would, what we would do is, we would reduce the levy amount in a future year by that amount. So, you know, essentially, the, the way the tax calculation works is how much money we need to levy against the assessed valuation, so we would just reduce it by whatever the balance is in adjacent ways.
So you want to take an interest-free loan for an unspecified amount of time on the backs of our residents that we may or may not return by reducing a levy in a future year?
What I'm suggesting is that is a possibility. We wouldn't even consider asking for the adjacent ways if we didn't think those projects were necessary. So we're not asking for it unnecessarily, I'm just, realistically, we don't have the authority to say that a traffic signal exists on Fifty First Avenue or not. The City of Phoenix determines that.
So realistically, beyond the, the revenue that we have, can you give us specific projects that we know can move forward that are for the safety of our kids? Because I would happily put a dollar fifty on my home or any other home if it meant our kids were safe. I just have to know that it's a necessity versus just something that we do to do. I think that's really what I'm looking for.
I wonder if Dr. Finch would like to.
Sure.
Answer Ms. Mrs. Fisher, Mrs. Fisher's question.
Sure, that's a good question. And I'm actually the problem, the reason why we're chasing this traffic light. Again, I think it was looked at thirteen years ago, and they told us no. What I witnessed when I was pulling out of Deer Valley High School, and I saw a Frogger happening with our big yellow buses between the cars, I asked, I stopped and asked, and how come there isn't a light here? Well, they, everyone in the bus garage that I could come in contact with said, "We've tried and they've told us no, and we don't think you can do it." Well, that made me mad. What about the safety of our bus drivers? Somebody's going to get a T-bone there. It wasn't if, it's when. And to watch them zoom out of there, I, I'd said, "We have to do something." So I just started making phone calls and eventually found the right person. It was the same person that told us no thirteen or whatever years ago, and said that we're not taking no for an answer, this is a safety issue. So what do I need to? And so we started having meetings, and yes, we went down six different, well, three different rabbit trails and, and have struck out. But, so this, this, the probability of the traffic light coming is a long shot. So we just put it on this list just in case, for some bizarre reason, it actually happens. The, the dollars really for this, in my mind, are for our, for our next renovation, which would be at Hillcrest, that I mentioned before. Again, for the safety of fire rigs and ambulance, et cetera, that come onto our campuses, and that's really what the dollars are, that's what it's designed for. So I, I think the traffic light is still a year away unless some miracle happens in the next, you know, months, but, so that's, it's, for me, it's a safety issue. It's actually a tax reduction, because last year it was a dollar sixty-three, this year it's a dollar fifty. So it's a reduction of ten cents to our taxpayers, so it's actually a tax reduction.
And I have a question that I know Ms. Tweedy has been waiting. So of the money that was collected last year when it was approved by the board, did we spend all of that, or are, are there any funds left?
President, yeah, President Frank, there, last year we had a four hundred thousand dollar adjacent ways budget. Another component of this is any project in excess of fifty thousand dollars has to be approved by the school facilities board, so there's another layer of approval that's required for any expenditure. And the school facilities board only approved three hundred and seventy-five thousand of the four hundred thousand dollars, so there'll be a balance of just under twenty-five thousand dollars of last year's adjacent ways.
And how much would be needed for Hillcrest, adjacent ways?
Well, we're not sure, I, I don't want to sound.
They'd assume it's more than twenty-five thousand?
Yeah, it's going to be more than twenty-five thousand, for sure. It, it really depends on, we have not spoken to the Hillcrest community to know exactly what some of their needs are. We have found that at every school that we've modernized, because the original builds, these campuses are about thirty years old, the, the traffic patterns that we see today are way different than they were thirty years ago, and so we have to make some improvements, you know, to make sure that we have a, a safe environment at the campuses. So I'm going to say, just conservatively, it would be a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, so we don't know specifically what the safety concerns might be at Hillcrest? We can assume there will be some, but we don't know specifically what they, I just want to make sure I understand what they are. There is a, a small amount of money from last year that could be put towards that in addition to bond money that could be put towards that. Am I understanding that, is that correct?
President Frank, because we didn't use the four hundred thousand and we're only including four hundred thousand in this year, we're actually returning twenty-five thousand dollars to the taxpayers because we're not going to, we won't have to levy the full four hundred thousand, we'll levy the difference.
Okay. And Ms. Tweedy, thank you for waiting.
Okay, how much money is in the bond for the Hillcrest renovation?
President Frank, Ms. Tweedy, I believe it's eight million dollars.
So you think?
I can confirm that.
The, perhaps you could do, do an analogy of our current project at Arrowhead and the reductions we had to do to, to make that fly as well, that might be applicable because of the growing costs, et cetera.
I apologize, the total amount for Hillcrest is seven million dollars. And, actually, that's not right either. It's eight million dollars without the adjacent ways, so I was right the first time, I apologize.
It's eight million?
Eight million, correct.
And, and so we don't think eight million will be enough to address any safety concerns?
It's, Hillcrest is a middle school, so it's about a hundred thousand square feet. We're at Arrowhead, which is about seventy thousand square feet, and our budget with all of the adjustments that we had to make was six point seven million dollars, and two of the classroom buildings were not making any improvements to. So, yes, there will be a significant challenge trying to meet that budget.
But we don't, but we're not aware of safety concerns that we need this four hundred thousand for right now? Or, or, I'm sorry, this should be three hundred and seventy-five thousand?
Again, this is prescribed to us, the, the language here. In reality, we're going to actually levy three hundred and seventy-five thousand, but we have to publish it as four hundred thousand, because they assume the twenty-five thousand's going back to the taxpayer anyhow.
Okay, but, but we don't actually know what needs to be done in excess of eight million dollars?
President Frank, Ms. Tweedy, that is correct. We have not worked on the design at all at Hillcrest, but historically, we have spent at least several hundred thousand dollars on every one of the modernization projects for safe ingress and egress to the campuses.
Thank you.
And I have one further question. There was bond money set aside for new buses, correct?
Ms. Frank, that's correct.
Okay, so with the DARA grant that was awarded to the district, does that free up additional bond money? I mean, that, those monies would not then need to be spent?
President Frank, the way we have been treating the DARA grant is that it will acquire more buses than was originally planned.
Okay, so not reduce the cost of what, it will just move our bus replacement schedule ahead of what it would have been?
Correct, because the current bus replacement schedule does, just puts a small dent in, in the need that exists.
Thank you for clarifying it was the need and not the bus.
Yeah, yeah, not a dent in the bus, but a dent in the need. And, and so, as we are. And so as we are contemplating maybe a future bond authorization out into the future, we know that currently we have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year programmed into this authorization. That's probably going to need to be more like a million dollars in future considerations, just because the, we went so long without replacing a bus, that we are behind in trying to replace a fleet.
So my question really was, is the grant going to be used to reduce what would have need to have been spent? And what I'm hearing from you is that you'll still spend what you originally had planned, and then use the grant to purchase additional?
Correct.
Okay, so eventually, down the road, there'll be a savings. It'll be, it'll be many, never mind, you've answered my question. Okay, one more. Ms. Fisher?
The traffic light, just I have to tell Dr. Finch for right now, that traffic light is necessary. In all the years I've lived in Deer Valley and had my children attending Deer Valley High School, that is the one area where a child has been struck by a car. Now, City of Glendale is on one side of the street, City of Phoenix is on the other, so I would say work with them both and make one of them help our kids and secure our kids, because it's not safe. Hearing that that money's really not going to be used for that concerns me. However, you've made some really good points as far as our bond being necessary for buses. If we continue with this adjacent ways, and I understand it will be a reduction in tax from last year to this year, but it's still an increase in overall compared to what it could be. Would, so you're using that then, would use it for buses? It would make it easier, because I'm kind of trying to get all this conversation, I just want to know, I guess, clearly, that this four hundred thousand dollars is necessary. If we haven't, we haven't come up with a building design, we don't have projections, we don't know if we really need it there, got it? If we can't use it for a stoplight, because the cities won't cooperate, we all need to go down to the city and start making a ruckus, got it? If we don't want to use the bond funds to cover what this four hundred thousand would, because we want to reserve it for buses, that I understand. So, I mean, is that, if we don't approve this, if we do not approve this tax, and the four hundred thousand dollars is not realized, because the twenty-five will go back, the three seventy-five would come, what would that impact be to the district, to our kids? Because it sounds to me like if we haven't even come up with a plan of what we're going to do, then that construction isn't coming in this year.
President Frank, Ms. Fisher, no, the, we are planning to make the improvements at Hillcrest in the summer of two thousand and nineteen, so it will happen. But your initial question is, what will be the result? We would not have the means to be able to afford the traffic light if the city were to approve it, and we would have to reduce the scope of the Hillcrest improvements to fit all of the improvements within the total eight million dollars.
So either way, it is a necessity for our future planning for the safety of our kids?
I would agree with that comment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the board has had quite a few questions, and I believe since it's a public hearing, I know, we'll open it up to questions, comments from members of the public, if anyone would like to step forward. Clearly, no one wants to step forward and comment on this, so anything further, Mrs. Ordway?
No, I was just going to say we must have asked all the great questions, because we read their minds.
Hey, 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 positivity.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. McGlorino, very much for the information and the presentations. If there's nothing further, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So, a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, so I'd like to thank everyone, first of all, for your patience. I know our meeting was scheduled to start at seven, we ran a little.